Like to call a regular planning mission meeting of March twenty first, two thousand and twenty four to order. Plaid will be done by Commissioner Reese.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner De Blasio.
Here.
Commissioner Sarquilla.
Here.
Commissioner Contreras.
Here.
Vice Chair Reese.
Here.
Chair Mercado.
Here. No reordering of agenda, so we'll go to approve of the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four. We have a motion.
All motion that we approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Second. Oh, I was asking for a second. Anybody?
Marcelo.
Marcelo.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You'll have to recuse yourself.
That's right.
You have to abstain. Public comments, seeing that we don't have many members of the public here today. Consent counter, none. No continued public hearings, none. New public hearings, none. Other. We'll go to conceptual review number two of Highway.
Before we do that, I'm gonna have to recuse myself because I am within proximity of the my house of the project.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll go to conceptual review number two, Highway two forty six, Commercial Center, twenty East Highway two forty six and two twenty Avenue of Flags. APN is number one thirty seven, one ninety dash zero two two, zero two four, zero three zero, zero one three, zero three three, zero one five and zero zero seven. And Irma is going to give us our information, looks like.
Yes. All right. Thank you. And good evening, Chair Mercado and members of the Planning Commission. I would like to share my screen so that I can go through the brief project presentation that I have. And I will attempt to do this right now. Okay. Can you all see just the PowerPoint of my screen?
Yes.
Okay, and nothing else?
Well, we see you.
Well, that's good. Well, that's good. You can see me, but no- nothing else on my on my desktop. Okay. Perfect. Um. So yes, the the project that you have before you this evening is the second conceptual review for the proposed Highway two forty six Commercial Center located at twenty East Highway two forty six and also fronting on two twenty Avenue of Flags. Um. Let me just make sure that I can advance this. There we go. So this is a vicinity map for the project. I mentioned that's fronts on both the Highway two forty six and Avenue of Flags. And these blue lines signify the currently configured lots and there are seven, seven parcels that are within the that are being assembled for this project site. This is Ellen's Restaurant and the there's a car lot on the corner here. And we'll talk about this a little bit later, but this triangular portion is part of the Caltrans right away as it's concurrently configured on the parcel. Um, the property is located within the Avenue of Flags specific plan area. It's opportunity site number ten. And the one thing that I would like to point out about this is that the specific plan does mention that because of the location of this property and the exposure that it has, that specialty building types are encouraged. And an example given would be the fifties diner motif for a similar interpretation of art deco art modern. The site is was a good portion of the site is located within the hundred year flood zone boundary as the southern portion of the site is located adjacent to Zaka Creek, which is flows right down here. I pointed out the the parcels that are separate parcels that are on the site. There are three existing commercial buildings that would be demolished on the site, including the Trace Rosa's Restaurant. And as mentioned, it's in the Avenue Flag specific plan, the zoning and underlying zoning and land use are general commercial. And the project is consistent with that as currently proposed. And architectural style is art deco as required. Okay. So um. This is considered the second conceptual review for the project as there was a previous review held back in August, two thousand and twenty three. The uses were similar. The architectural style at that point was not as thoroughly fleshed out as it is now. And they've come back with a revised architectural style that reflects more of what the Avenue Flag specific plan was envisioning for the site in its design style. And there have been some slight changes to the square footages of the different uses. And these are just summarized here. There's still a new market in Delhi proposed and the current square footage proposed is just slightly less than previously. There's still a coffee shop with drive through proposed, which is just just a smidge larger than previously proposed. And the applicant is aware and is proposing to submit for a specific plan amendment, which is needed for the drive through. Uh, there's a hotel and ancillary office for twenty four guest units. It is somewhat larger than before. And um. Let me see what else is on here. And we've not done a thorough review of the parking, parking requirements that would be done when the project comes in for a formal application. But the applicant has submitted a pretty thorough set of plans as far as a conceptual review goes and project narrative that was part of the PC agenda packet. I would just like to show the site layout here. The the hotel is here, fronts on Highway two forty six. The main entrance off of two forty six is proposed to be right here. And this is where that triangular piece of right away that's currently part of the Caltrans right away is that's something that will need to be addressed as the project goes forward. Uh, the coffee shop is located right here. And the market is here. So slightly different orientation than we had before, but it makes a nice use of the site. Right here, if you can see my cursor, there's a trail, pedestrian trail proposed along the creek that really connects Avenue Flags to Highway two forty six and goes going through the project. And also provides a nice buffer to Zaka Creek. Okay, so I'm just gonna keep this slide up for a moment. Um. Okay. So a couple of key things I would that I I started to mention is that um, so the applicant has taken a quite a creative approach to interpreting the art deco art modern design style. And we have elevations, including your PC packet, which I will put up on the screen in a moment. But I would just like to go in a little bit more detail on the specific buildings that would be here. So I mentioned the twenty four key motel that's along the Highway two forty six frontage. It was two stories high. And this has a kind of an art modern, almost mid-century feel to it, but it has a space theme that kind of reflects the proximity of the Vandenberg Space Base to Beelton and capitalizes on that as well. And it's an iconic piece along with the coffee shop, which has some very unique and iconic art deco art modern elements to it which are suitable for the particular site that I'm we're looking at. Um, let me just see, a lot of this we've covered before. Um. Yeah, so uh, what would be required here is because the uh, drive through is kind of also has kind of a unique circulation element to it. Uh, we would need a traffic and circulation study to be done as part of the formal application. And the applicant is aware of this and is prepared to be proceeding forward with getting that completed. As I mentioned, the Caltrans triangular piece here that also provides access to this flood control head wall here. And this is the point at which Zaka Creek daylight says it comes down here. So um. Because of Caltrans jurisdiction here, just this is something that we would require that early consultation with Caltrans be started. So some of some of those types of design elements or Caltrans involved involve and can be a long, longer term item to do. So we would just need to get started on that as soon as possible. And what else do we have here? Um. Zaka Creek, any improvements adjacent to Zaka Creek would need to take into consideration the fifty foot setback from the creek and also the you know, the the elements, the riparian zones that are there and the improvements that are shown on our setback fifty feet from Zaka Creek. But we would be asking the applicant to plot the top of bank and further flesh out the setbacks that are being proposed. And one of the other elements that would need to be addressed in particular as part of the circulation study would be how much vehicle queuing is allowed here and if it is adequate or not to accommodate the type of vehicles, the amount of vehicles that are being anticipated. So I'm just going to go forward and show some of the other elevations here. This is the north and south elevation of the motel. Um, hotel with the you know, art deco art modern streamlined modern actually, design elements here reflecting the space theme. Other hotel elevations, the coffee shop. Again, the drive through has an iconic teapot, teapot, coffee pot that cars would be driving through. So this is a would create a nice landmark facade along Highway two forty six. And this is the market elevation. Again, with more of a traditional art deco flair, but it blends nicely with the other art deco interpretations on the site. And that's a kind of a perspective view of what it would look like. And this is just kind of a recap of some of the items that I've mentioned so far. Generally consistent with the Avenue Flag specific plan, except for the, you know, specific plan amendment that wouldn't be needed for the drive through. They're proposing a tentative parcel map to merge the seven lots into, I believe it's three. And um. Also, you know, flood plain flood proofing would be need to be addressed and any work that's being done to the flood control improvements that are currently there. And I know that Rose, our Public Works Director, also had a couple of comments. I I may have touched on some of them. Now, Rose, if there's something you would like to add to what I mentioned?
I think Irma covered the main parts about with the with the flood areas and Caltrans. Um, one thing we want to make sure to when the formal submittal does come in is making sure that there's an exhibit that shows all the utilities and existing easements that are onsite relative where the buildings and everything else is proposed. That way we need to make sure that there isn't anything under proposed under the structures, not your project, but previous projects did show like our existing public sewer mains. And I need some areas which isn't necessarily a big deal. It's just a matter of relocating them. That would be conditioned as part of the project, but that way at least everyone's aware.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I, we touched on this before, but just summarizing what the formal submittal would look like would most likely consist of a final development plan, a conditional use permit, demolition permit, tentative parcel map, specific plan amendment. And then other applicable permits would need to be pursued. Caltrans, as we mentioned, perhaps the involvement of Department of Fish and Wildlife because of potential impacts to the creek. And others may pop up as we move through the permit process. But that is concludes my comments at this point. So the main purpose tonight is for the applicant to receive comments from the planning commission on the revised project plans as shown. And also would like to note that the applicant would also like to seek a similar concept review from the city council. As ultimately this project would need to go to the city council because of the specific plan amendment. And so so just taking that into note, any of the comments made by the planning commission tonight would you know, accompany the project forward and any further details or revisions they would be making, we would schedule a a further review from the before the city council at a later date. And that concludes my presentation. I know the property owner at St. George is in the audience tonight, and I believe he has a few items that he would like to talk about in relation to the project. So I would like to, at this point, turn it, turn it back to Chair Mercado and then at the commission's pleasure have at St. George come up and make a presentation as well. Thank you.
Irma, before we open it up to him, does the commission have any questions for Irma at this time?
I don't.
Um, I think I just have questions for the applicant, which he may address.
Okay, so you're saying if you'd like to come up and?
We just state your name.
Hello, my name is Ed St. George. Want to thank Irma for doing a great job describing this project. It is quite a bit different than the first proposal. I was unaware of it. How entrenched Beelton was on the whole art deco and art modern. But I have to say this, I've embraced it now, hundred percent. I'm willing to go for it. And so I think this kind of shows that the idea, I'll start with the leasing, and that's the the small grocery store. The reason I'm looking at this is after living in the valley, I realized that I think you're all probably familiar with El Rancho Market. This is a little bit smaller than that. But the idea is to have something about that size where you don't have to go all the way to Albertson's. But also something that we actually have an easement, a reciprocal easement with the I don't want to say it's the, it's a, it's the RV park. We know there's a different name.
Flying Flags.
What's Flying Flags? And so the idea would be to really put in a large deli like El Rancho, but also have items that people from majority of the people in Beelton, I think, as you all know, live on this side of the freeway. So unless you're gonna go buy a whole bunch of groceries, the idea is to stop by this deli, get your groceries that you need. Same thing with the RV park. They don't have to get in their car and drive over to Albertson's anymore. They just walk over the little pathway that they have and also use the deli. But the idea we came up with that instead of just building a building was to make it look like it was once a theater. Like a really nice theater. That's why you kind of see the front. It's difficult to really see the the announcement area, like bits in front of it. But that's they have like, I don't know if you recall, but they used these like plastic letters, you know, to describe the voting. The idea is to have little sayings, you know, cute sayings for the community or congratulations, you know, to the school team or, you know, that's to be on there. So that's, it's got a dining area off to the side. Kind of see the tables and chairs off to the creek side. The idea is to really kind of play off the creek a lot. So that's why we decided to push the scene that side, not putting any angels over there. The hotel is given the hotels that we have here in the valley right now and the hotels that are being scheduled to be built. One of the things I've realized is that there's really nothing in our community right now that we have this amazing Space Force base. I mean, there's two in the world. One is here, I mean, which is really remarkable. Whether you like rockets or not, it's still a remarkable thing that we have in our backyard. And this Space Force base, whether it be private or for the military, will be bringing in people to live and to work here for anywhere from two weeks to probably two years at a time. Where people may not want to own a house and then furnish it. Or they just need a place to stay for six or seven weeks or more. If you look at the floor plans, I think you have, it's a very convertible hotel. It can go from anywhere from one bedroom to three full bedrooms. And it was designed that way on purpose. If if somebody wants to have, let's say, they don't want to spend or they don't have an RV participate in the RV park. But they want to have a big family get together. Not everybody has an RV. Look, you can rent one of these hotels. You can rent a series of rooms next to each other. Spend a lot of time making it to where this would be convertible for this very purpose. It's only a twenty four key hotel, which is very typical back in the forties. And along Route two four six or Route sixty six. Spent a lot of time kind of studying those. That's why you have the, it's more of a mid-century. One of the reasons I I really wanted to choose the signage the way I did, if you kind of look at it, it even talks about color TV, which was a big deal back then, the tub and showers, which was a good deal back then. And it's corny, but we look back in that. I mean, that was very space age back then. And so the idea is to make it, I think the whole idea of going art deco and art modern from Beelton is to kind of hold us in that that time in history when Beelton where that is, I mean, that's peak really. So that's the reason we've come up with this size, even the kidney shaped pool that we put in there with the block. And the way it'd be done, the the design work out front. And the way it'd be done, the uh, the design work out front. Is very, very era type. And now I'm gonna move to the coffee shop, the, the coffee shop. If you, and I sat in front of this. Before I even purchased this property, the reason I purchased it, by the way, I want to tell you this, it was not easy. Getting all seven parcels, I wished I could have gotten thirteen of them, but I gave up at seven, I was done. I mean, the people who sold were gonna sell. I literally watched people sell their cars, they would get up in the morning, they would drive over to Starbucks. They'd get their coffee, I sat right on that corner, and then I would watch them drive back across the freeway and they get back on the freeway. Or I would watch people come over here, they would drive over, they would get their coffee and they would drive back. Not that I have this amazing memory for remembering the license plates, but you can tell the cars. And I thought, okay, we need to drive through the coffee shop. Not a huge fan of Starbucks, Starbucks. And so hopefully this would compete with Starbucks, I would like to say that there would probably be less traffic, we'll let the traffic studies speak for itself. But I would like to say that most likely the market and the coffee shop will actually reduce traffic, I would hope. Because like I said, huge amount of people um in Yuleton live on this side of the freeway. Now, that's not accounting for the fact that. The reason I wanted to come up with something very, very iconic is. Andersons is gone, we all know now, um and we need something to replace it. The hotel's cute, the market's cute, but we need something else to take its place. My feeling is coming up, everybody drinks coffee, coming along the freeway, either way. I wanted to make this something that really keeps Yuleton on the map and keeps it even more on the map. Um, where people, we have to stop by the diner, we have to go under the coffee pot. And I don't know if you noticed, even when you pick up the coffee, the order in the coffee pot, and then you come around and pick up under the. Coffee cup, teacup. It's corny, um but it'll be fun. Believe it or not, it'll be a lot of fun. I'm going to, I've already decided, I'm at a point in my career where I can make these kind of decisions. I'm not going to put it out to a chairman. I'm hoping that we can find like a, a very unique operator, maybe somebody who already has maybe one or two. Or has been a manager of a coffee shop, or currently, um that's kind of the idea, the. The reason we're going into from seven to three parcels, the idea is to sell the coffee shop off. I may have to sell it with. An understanding that I I retain a portion to make sure it goes in the right direction. Um, it's the same thing with the grocery store. And it's the same thing with the hotel, the idea is not for me to be the landlord of this property. It's more of, I want to push it in the right direction, and once it's pushed, now we have owner operators, which I think. Personally is what, one of the things we're missing in the country now again. And I think we're gonna start seeing more of that, that's one of the things I really love about Yuleton. You have a lot of small businesses here, so that's the reason we're carving it back into three parcels. Um, specifically for the hotel to be sold off, the coffee shop can be sold off, along with the grocery store. Ready for questions?
Marcelo, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I like the uh, the idea of uh, it'd be very eye catching. The hotel stuff itself. I kind of go back and forth with the the building um paint scheme, but. Again, going back to uh doing something eye catching, uh that reminds me of the big donut in uh in in LA and uh. Uh, the Brown Derby that uh was out there in the Worcester District and uh. I feel that it, I, doing something iconic and for losing uh um. Or split pee thing uh i- is important to Yuleton, we're on the verge of um. Stepping forward and uh I know everybody. Likes the way things are and want to be very careful about how we go forward and uh. This is a nice bright way to start, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I have questions and then I'll fold for comments.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I know you had a pretty complicated situation with easements onsite and the Caltrans easement have. Like Gavin indicated that you were kind of waiting to see how things were looking before you started trying to resolve those issues, but I was curious if you'd made. Any progress on that end?
We made quite a bit of that way so far, um we just got our, we just now actually got our top of the bank. Situated.
Okay.
Figured out. In fact, next set of frames you'll see, we'll have the official top of the bank on it. It actually gives us a little pad bit more than you're seeing right now, we took it a little more on the conservative side. A liberal side, so we will have a little more open space than what you're seeing right now.
Okay.
And we are working on, so they're all over the place.
Yeah, and then um he'd also talked about incorporating some sort of landscape buffer around the. The creek and I like the concept of putting a trail as part of the buffer. But, you know, obviously I get that you guys are still trying to figure out how much space you have there and probably will be incorporating native landscaping and. Um, some sort of visual relief there.
Yeah, the idea is that. We're really counting a lot of from the Ranch de Maria people, if they ever talk to me again. Hopefully they'll come visit, but the idea is to have a lot of those people. Walk or ride their bikes over, and that was the whole idea, having the trail coming from the two forty-six side. Up into the the project and so. None of those people from Ranch de Maria will probably be utilizing the hotel, but hopefully the grocery store and the coffee shop. But yeah, that that was the whole idea, having that trail come from that direction.
Okay, the rest of what I have is comments.
Okay, Dana, any questions?
I was wondering, and I don't know if it's to you or to Irma, but uh how we looked at the height requirements? And has that been uh noted on here already? Um, my concern is the heights of the space needle or the rocket ship and it being if it's um LED lighting.
Yes, I actually um took a look at that in in particular in the specific plan and they they are. Within what's what's allowed in the specific plan, the um, the height allowable heights are um thirty-five feet. Um, by by right in the specific plan area and that doesn't include. Um architectural elements that um project higher than that, um such as the. The sign and the spaceship, but in this case, those don't project higher than um thirty-five feet, I believe. Based upon the current project description that they have, so um. Um, two-story hotel, I believe it was around twenty-something feet. Um, so I think they're they're within the um. Um, height limits in the area.
And then my other question would be, do we obliged by any dark sky ordinance or? And will this be within those boundaries?
Yep.
We we would require the that um, the applicant provide, you know, a lighting. Plan and a photometric study and comply with our um. Dark sky um outdoor lighting ordinance.
Um, other than that, those were the only questions, questions I have, save my comments.
Okay, um, I do have a couple of questions, one was on the easements and then the question of consolidating from seven to three. And with your concept of trying to. Sell or the three individuals. Excuse me, if one should happen to. Falter. Uh, I know what you're saying, you're not trying to take be the landlord, but say for instance, the coffee shop doesn't make it for some, for whatever reason. Are are you gonna be enough in the background, what I guess what I'm trying to is just to make sure the whole concept looks great. But if for one reason or another, one of them doesn't make it, would that affect your process with the hotel and? The market and are there any other contingency plans for, if something should happen that way?
Chairman Mercado, hey, I'm fully cognizant that state of California and state of New York are probably the most two. I'm gonna say ridiculously overrated, overregulated states in our union. Um, and I realize how difficult it is to run a business here. And that's why I was very careful to say that I would still be involved.
Okay.
In selling these, um, yeah, that's exactly one of my concerns as well. Like I said, I'm at a point in my career now where I can make different kind of decisions.
Right.
Yeah, I would love to sell you this place, you know what, I have the first right of refusal to buy it back.
Okay.
And to make sure things keep going, um it it's very important, and I've seen too many businesses. Fail, especially coming from Santa Barbara, or it's probably close to ninety percent.
Right, right, and I'm I'm, because this is gonna be an iconic corner for us and and um. Oh, so I was just concerned on that and for my overall comments, I will leave to that, but those were my two big questions. The easements, because I I know Gavin was really concerned, I mean, like you said, there's some that who only knows. So hopefully this will kind of spur the. People to uh start working with you.
So so far it seems to be going well.
Good, good. Any other questions for our applicant?
No, I only praised the project.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate it.
We'll run back up to here for final comments and um recommendations. Marcelo, anything?
My recommendation is that we, if we go forward with the project. Um, and thank you for your presentation and Irma's as well, sorry she couldn't, she couldn't be here.
So it's nice to see Irma, um, I wanted to thank Irma for confirming that all the structures and uh. The um improvements have been pulled out of the creek setback, there were a couple hanging out in there still, last time we looked at it, so thanks for. Accommodating that. It's a little bit on the nose, but I find it really charming, I actually really like the architecture and. You know, with the hotel, I like that you chose a color scheme that's a little bit understated, it's still, it fits in with. We have a lot of architecture here that's more, you know, earth tone colors and um more like modern farmhouse. Ranch house kind of architecture, and so it still fits in with that while achieving consistency with the specific plan, so. Um, whoever designed that, it's really well thought out, I thought. You know, the decorative elements are the the cheesy part like you acknowledged, but I I, I like them. And the buildings work without them too, except at the coffee shop, I feel like that's kind of integral. As far as the hotel, oh, I like that it was relocated to the front, I know you guys were trying to make it work in the triangle in the back there. But it, especially with the changes you made, I think it deserves to be up on the street front edge. And i- it is a smart idea to have that connection with the market to some other walkable areas in the back there. Yeah, on the market, I I I really like the market, it's something for the community in the project as is the coffee shop. But uh, the only comment I had on it is there's a slight asymmetry to it. And I think um, you know, depending on how you consider the dining area that'll be in front of that, it could help balance the the building. And let's see. Um, and then, you know, we obviously had concerns about the drive-through and the fact that it would um, it kind of. Front the two forty-six, the portion with the drive aisle. Um, and that that, there were some potential inconsistencies with that not being pedestrian friendly. Um, but I definitely could see the coffee shop being popular, a lot of people are on their way to work that direction, and so the queuing. Is gonna be really important. Um, so we'll be interested in seeing that traffic study, and I think that was. Everything that I have, I it, I like it and I think it improved a lot in the the last. Couple months since you've been here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for this endeavor, uh, obviously it reminds me a little bit of uh, from when I do my trips to uh. Palm Springs and Calazon, you know, our kids stop by the big dinosaurs, so it's kind of. Uh, uh, I mean, not a tourist attraction, but it's a kind of a iconic piece. Getting to Palm Springs and then seeing all this art deco, art modernist thing that you have here placed. I do have a little bit of concerns uh that. In regards to, I I know your relationship with the Ranch de Maria community is a little contentious. And I have a little concern of what the community's feedback might be on that, um, I do understand where they're coming from, but I do understand. I'm gonna say the bribery, to take on such a. Such a piece here in Yulet, you know, and like you said, we did lose the Anderson P Restaurant, which was iconic, right? I don't know if we're gonna no longer see that sign down the one-on-one and maybe be replaced by uh. Uh, coffee kettle here, uh but uh. I really applaud you for taking on this, uh for moving this forward and the way you are, uh. I think I voiced my concerns about the heights and kind of uh might be a little sore. Sore subject for some people that are uh living in the community, so the other thing that I really have concerns about is. Uh, how are we adding to the traffic, uh as you see. Um, before me, you guys had a contentious meeting in regards to the in and out and what that brought forth. So I don't know if this project will do the same, but if we have the proper backup and the. The traffic study so shows us that impactful as it is, uh then I don't think it should be a problem, but other than that. Uh, thank you for bringing this forth and making it uh here for Yulet as a, as the next. How can I say it, uh Americana piece, right? Kind of like the word I'm looking for.
Thank you, um, I like to um, thank you for bringing it forward. Uh, it's, I think it's a much better project than the first one. Especially the art deco design style, it makes it pop out, it's very iconic. Um, I I think even our former chair would appreciate the art deco standard that you're hitting for, so. It's uh really, really, really gonna be special, I was a little concerned about. The square footage growing up from nineteen thousand, so that's another five thousand, so I assume that went toward the hotel. Or.
Like I say, they have convertible rooms.
Right, and I like that, I think that is gonna be really big, because uh we have a huge family and we travel, we go to. Down LA to go see Notre Dame play, or go to San Francisco, or we go to actually go back to Notre Dame. And it's easier when we're all together, so something like this would be great, so instead of all the kids running around. Okay, they're on the second floor, now they're on the third floor, to be together, I think that would be so beneficial, and I think, like you said. There's nothing like that here in the valley, so hopefully um they will find it special and continue to use it. I think the other question that presented by Shannon was, you know, the landscaping on the trail and stuff like that, so when you do find a bigger. Proposal, we, I'm, I especially am a a big landscape person and and I like to see as much as we can. Uh, and that footprint, but overall, this is such a much better uh presentation. And I I think it'll be an iconic uh. Piece of property here in in Yulet, and I think you did an outstanding job for it, so I commend you for it and uh thank you for bringing to us.
Well, I want to thank you too for actually pushing back, because I would have gone with the other project. Barely exciting, um, one of the things that I do have to say this too. It's really exciting. Um, one of the things that I I do have to say this to. I can't see this happening anywhere else in California. I think Duellton is the perfect place. It's, it's Americana. So I, I, I'm excited about this project, I really am. And I know Rose has a lot of concerns that we're already in the process of making care of them, for sure. So I really appreciate, like I said, pushing me in this direction. It's resulted, I think, in a much better project overall.
Thank you.
I know we ended on such a pleasant note there, but I did have one small other comment.
Sure.
Um, just because the um, the rear of the market's gonna be. I'm not exactly sure what it's facing, but maybe there's not much treatment on the back there, so at least considering landscape screening or how we could soften that rear of the structure.
We haven't put too much time into that. Um, I know we made a comment that it's asymmetrical. Um, currently, we're working on that right now. It bothered me. But now that we have the, like I said, we took the conservative approach for the creek setback. We now have the availability to kinda change or design a little bit, so hopefully that that kind of stuff drives me crazy.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Like I said, landscaping's big. I I mean, I I like the front of it and I, that was one of the, but the whole landscape part of it would. You know, anything that is green, trees, shrubs, I think makes a big difference, cause it softens up the area and and uh. Like I said, this is a great project that you brought forward to us, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate all the time that you guys, I know you guys get paid a lot of money to be up here. That's, I appreciate your thought very much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Irma.
My pleasure.
Oh, thank you.
Righty, um, do we have any written com- communications? Do we have any planning commissioner comments?
Um.
Oh, oh.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna start by welcoming Daniel to Daisier and uh, uh, hopefully you'll enjoy your time here.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, I think it's uh, right in my wheelhouse of what I do on day-to-day. And I I guess uh, I'm stubborn for more of the same work that I do, so. I guess that's why I signed up for here. Not like I don't have enough time with two kids and ponyball and everything else, but you know, uh. I think my expertise, my background and living in this community and setting up these roots here in this community is gonna. Uh, pay off in the long run and I appreciate everybody here uh, for welcoming today. And hopefully I could serve uh, this position properly and uh, through the interim and we'll see what goes after that. Thank you.
I was just mostly, and welcome, Daniel. Nice to meet you. I also um. Well, we'll chat after the meeting. Uh, I couldn't remember anything from the green team that we didn't already talk about on Monday, but. The the tree city thing is still getting tossed around. See where that goes. Um, and then most of it was about the urban growth boundary update, which obviously we saw that presentation on Monday, so I don't think I actually have anything to share from that.
And that was one other comment I was gonna try to make, uh, I didn't mean, I forgot that Andrea was not gonna be here. I know council has their workshop, but I think somewhere, and I was gonna mention this to Scott. Uh, somewhere in between that workshop and before the deadline, the May twenty-fifth. I think it would really be beneficial to uh, the city to have a joint. Meeting where we have a city and planning commission. Uh, hearing, that way they know, I I, when I was on the council, we had two, three of those and we both also had them when I was on the planning commission. Uh, especially because this was, I'm hoping it won't be as contentious as the the other one, but it's. Shows that uh. And I think the comments that we made the other evening were right on board and right on target. So hopefully that way, uh, the, you know, hopefully we'll have a few more people uh, involved and um. If not, if they're watching on TV, they're, they see us as a unified front. And the recommendation that they were making, uh, will have a better chance to go forward, so. That was my position on the UPG. And since uh, we don't have, or unless Claire, you're gonna do anything?
No.
Then great, we will. Close the meeting at six fifty-two.
Good job, ladies and gentlemen.